I can hear you now. No, I can't. Can you hear me?
Erin, I could hear you, but I cannot hear the council chambers.
Yep, same. Brandon.
Same.
I can hear you.
So let's use this cell phone and just dial in that number.
We can hear you now.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
Okay. Another change, so. Ryan is using his magic powers, so good job, Ryan. Okay. So we did get the roll call done. So the first thing is approval of the agenda.
Will be approved.
Second, Jason, Sandy. Discussion on the agenda. Take our time and count where to vote. Mr. Scaggs will be here ready to this button, so please vote. And that is approved, which takes us into public hearings. Although hearing A is as opposed to city property, we'll open that at the hearing. Did you receive any written or oral comment? Is anyone here to speak in a public hearing regarding the disposal of city property? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Moving to resolution number eight, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, a resolution to dispose of city property.
Move to approve.
Second. Jason, Steve, discussion on that. Seeing none, that's what please vote. That is approved. Smooth this into the consent agenda. Any matter of need, remove for consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Melissa. Any other discussion there? Council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us into the public forum, which is time to set aside for comments on the public topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Do we have anyone here to speak in the public forum this evening? Seeing none, we close this public forum, moving us to old business A, resolution number eleven, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Resolution to authorize payment of user increase in wastewater costs from general reserves.
Move to approve.
Second. Dane, Steve. So similar to before, it's basically allowing continued negotiation with BURK. They took care of the first month. This one will come out the second month. We have a meeting with them on Wednesday. It's locked off about half day meeting with all their donors. We can continue making progress on resolution there, so. There's no questions or discussion. I think please vote. That is approved. Your spend takes us to B. Brenda's back with us again regarding the small business program she talked about last month, her last meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the feedback last month regarding this new program, so I'm waiting for the handout to be distributed. So this looks very similar to what we saw last month. The only exception being is we dropped references to specifically supporting businesses in the downtown area. So this program would be designed to encourage new business anywhere in Nevada. And so really around the safe parameters, you'll need to submit a business plan. There will be some discussion around that, see the things that we can't fund and and that the grants will be up to five thousand dollars each. And our businesses located in the downtown will keep Emily will be the primary contact for those businesses. And then I'll assist those businesses looking outside the downtown district. And the NEDC Board of Directors did approve with the changes proceeding in partnership with the city. So that approval's done and it's really in your hands if you've decided this is something you want to pursue as a city. We're set and ready to go. Questions for me? I know Jordan provided you a little bit more detail, the backup that's on the flyer, but this is really looks at kind of where we're headed with the program and the piece that we use to market the program. And thanks for your feedback. Like I said, hopefully we're overwhelmed in people that are interested. And then gives us all information to consider for changes next year. It's popular across the community. Thanks for your time.
I'll move to approve as well, thank you. There's one change I do need to make on this. I noticed under grant will fall capital expenditures related to purchase of a downtown building. I would like you guys to approve that with me changing it to purchase of a building within city.
Our small building, I was just saying, I was thinking I updated.
I have. This is. That's just the flyer that's going to be distributed. That why I was referring to the document I drew in this downtown area.
I'm in my motion to approve as Jordan represented.
I'll say it. Sandy, Dane, discussion on the program.
I think it's a great program. I'm excited to see what this is going to bring to town.
Well, thanks for taking our discussion to heart and that. Thank you for those changes.
Seeing no further discussion, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to new business A, ordinance number ten fifty seven, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Ordinance amending chapter sixty five, stopper required in the city code. You require stops and additional intersections. First reading.
Move to approve option.
Second.
Dane, Melissa, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved. Takes us to B, ordinance number ten fifty eight, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Ordinance amending chapter fifty one, junk vehicles and machinery in the city code by adding language containing shipping and storage containers. First reading.
Move to approve. Second.
Jason, Dane, discussion there.
What is the plan for people who already have it on their property?
I think that would probably be better answered by Erin to see if we can do anything about that. I'm not sure if there's a grandfather clause or anything. I don't know about that. It would be nice if we could figure something out with them and hopefully give them time if we are required or can have them.
Yeah, so typically you, typically we take the position that they they may be grandfathered in if we don't give them enough time. Just know that there becomes additional challenges, but we could add to this with a sunset provision within, you know, I don't know if you want to give twelve months, but I think for a situation like this where it's not going to be a cheap pick up and move, that you might want a pretty reasonable amount of time for them to come into compliance. And then we can talk down the road about enforcement when that becomes an issue.
Do you think, Andy, how many of those rush where there might be?
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to put anyone in hardship because of the hardness.
Just out of curiosity, how many of those do you think are like new in the last year or two?
Well, one or two.
Any direction on what Erin mentioned about putting a timeframe or when I'll give open to enforcement discretion?
And I think I would like to have like some sort of timeframe so that they know what the expectation was.
I'd be all good for a couple years.
In time.
Erin, what have you seen in other towns that put something like this into their courts?
We have not seen a lot of our, none of our other communities have done this. I looked at a couple of sample ordinances and they gave a year, which I think would be on the low end of what you would think would be reasonable for this type of move.
But do you think two years would be reasonable then?
Well, I think it's more, I mean, that's, you know, that's where it gets gray, Jason. That's where courts decide what's reasonable. So there isn't anything right now that tells us what is, but obviously the longer you go, the more reasonable it becomes.
I don't see a way to get it to twenty twenty five.
We want to do July.
July one, twenty five.
Or not, July six.
Everybody said not hearing for July twenty sixth. So do they need to bring?
I'm hearing that compliance July one, twenty twenty six.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that something they'd receive with that amendment or do you bring back a new copy next to my meetings?
You can approve it with that amendment.
So we, I believe we had a motion to second already, so we got to move to a motion. Or?
Move the, amend my motion to exclude the grandfather until July first, twenty twenty six.
Then move to second.
Okay, so Jason made a motion to amend second of that discussion on that. And then why probably do roll call when you vote then?
Well, you didn't vote on it.
Yeah, so they were making a motion to amend that.
Right, so we'll just put it in a minute because it was never voted on to begin with.
He's amending his motion to say approve this with the changes.
Just amend the motion.
That's correct. As it stands, you can vote on the motion that's on the floor because he was just amending the motion.
Okay. No discussion? Correct. Andy.
And you?
Was, yes, square. I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't care about the since a lot of people don't pay attention. Can you ask Ryan, since he's got an exact answer how many there are, let everybody know in advance of an upcoming ordinance change? Because they're currently involved in legal use of their property right now. And you're looking at changing if he's got an exact number of people legally using their property, give them the heads up that this is on the floor.
See, head nine, so.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Anything else? Seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us to C, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding replacement of furnace and air conditioning at Centenary Systems House.
Move to approve option one. Sixty three, forty seven.
Sorry, Jason, entering. Discussion there. Seeing none, council, please vote. This proved, it's the resolution number twelve, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Resolution entering into a twenty eight year agreement with Nevada Community School District of School Resource Officer Program for the three-year period, July one, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty seven.
Move to approve. Second.
Sandy, Melissa, discussion.
For those.
Thanks to our chief for hard work getting that together. Anything else? Seeing none, I think please vote. It's approved. Takes us to E, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding purchase of the April news department.
Hello, so the actual form was pulled down in previous years. Since January, I've been reaching out, trying to find a vehicle to purchase. We've been moving forward with Tavos and going out for catalog here, was given a dollar amount for the state bid process. All those closed, there's a full out list for the twenty twenty five model years. Carl Sherrle has one available for us, but the dollar amounts listed on that's a little bit higher than what we paid in previous years. I think the last couple of years, forty thousand and three hundred dollars per Tavo. This one's forty nine thousand and eight hundred dollars. So Carl does not have any fours or drakes. These explorers or drangles available. Snyder's has a couple white ones available and their dollar amount's forty five or three. So everything's got about five thousand. So we're sitting at the option of picking up that Tavo that is reserved for us right now with that forty nine thousand dollar amount. Exploring the idea of doing like an explorer that's white, which kind of goes insert or tire fleet. For waiting to see how the future rolls, but I don't see that dollar amount changing at all. I did list on there an option of if you would like to, I could explore pickups. The sheriff's office is going to F one fifties for our storage wise, public safety. I'm not really a fan of getting a pickup. We lose storage space quite a bit, so I'd like to keep with the SUV, but that's where we're at right now.
How soon will you be able to get the?
They wanted me to sign for it last week, so if approved, I can sign for it tomorrow and that's concerned. It's still need to be outfitted. We have a twenty sixteen Explorer that we'd be trading in and recycling. Percentage of the police departments from that to install the new one. So it'd be reserved for us and it's just a time for their outfitters to take the parts out of car ninety one and get ready to build a new car.
Something like that today.
Build wise, it's like a week to two weeks. It just depends on their availability. In the past, we've been a month out on builds or three months out on builds. So it depends on how many vehicles they have and where we fall in the line. We do have a vehicle budget for this fiscal year. With that increased dollar amount, it's going to be right on the edge as far as where we're at. However, one of the things that's budget for this year was purchased last year, so there's a little bit we've ordered that our capital has some money for it.
I'll move to approve option one. Sorry. Dane, Jason. You have a notice session, council, please vote. It's approved. Takes us to F, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding fire purchase of a cardiac monitor.
I'm going to let Assistant Chief Jeff Gilchrist speak a little bit about our history and capability of the cardiac monitor. And then I'll kind of go through the package deals with you. So walk us through why this is not a three thousand dollar A D.
Mayor, City Council, my name's Jeff Gilchrist, paramedic nurse and also assistant chief on the fire department. I don't remember, I'm in a year, it's like traded to twenty eighteen. I approached our chief Reynolds with the idea of getting a twelve lead EKG monitor. Holy EKG monitor is a basically multi multi view of the heart that we could take pictures of and identify our attacks with as we moved into that ALS position in our service. Through a gift, through Mary Greeley, in about twenty eighteen, we got two of those monitors given to us. And they were not using them anymore. And we were able to implement that twelve lead EKG capability into our service. Those monitors have served as well and got to the point where chief, and rightly so, responds to a majority of the EMS calls in town during daytime. That it made sense for him to work through the proper capital budget means and get a new monitor. Well, it was a gift. It was a timed gift from Mary Greeley, the monitor that we currently have is Phillips. Part start, they are not servicing them anymore. And so we're at a kind of a time constraint in terms of how long that monitor is going to work with us. That monitor has again serviced very well. I believe wasn't left a monitor that that's also the same monitor that saved that gentleman's life that stood in front of us not that long ago. So we've proven on numerous occasions, benefits of this monitor, what it does and its capabilities. When we were notified just recently that it was not going to be serviced anymore, we needed to come up with some game plans. Grants are not foreign to us by any means. Parametals have been extraordinarily generous with us and they have come through again. So this monitor that you see right here is in the range of about thirty thousand dollars. And unfortunately, you're going to be here, Lieutenant Ray Beatty filled out paperwork for Parametals. And we were gifted fifteen thousand dollars for Parametals to do a EKG monitor for that. So a lot of the same capabilities, it may look different, different package. Does have twelve week capability and blood pressure, pulse oximetry, defibrillation. Lot more capabilities than a simple A and D that looks about the size of what I'm going to date myself here, record player. And so I'll let you have to talk about the details.
So this is like pack fifteen, this is when you think of cardiac monitors, they go brand new. New, never been used and refurbished. So this is a new monitor that has been sitting on a shelf waiting for somebody to buy it. So it's two years old, but it's new. We got it first. So that's thirty thousand dollars, a brand new from the factory is sixty thousand dollars. We need two cardiac monitors, so we have one or we'd like to purchase the second one. The association's grant money of fifteen thousand dollars will pay for half the monitor. We had budgeted thirty thousand dollars for a cardiac monitor, so that'll save our capital considering now with the partnership between the Nevada firefighters and the city. So we're looking to purchase a sister to this unit. It's two years old, but it's new, never been used. And the only difference is between that and the sixty thousand dollar monitor is it doesn't have telemetry. So we don't need to send anything to the hospital. We have paramedics that can interpret the twelve lead. So telemetry is really good for our ambulances that are going down the road and sending a picture and like this update to the hospital. We don't transport, so we don't have to do that. So that's where we're at with this. So thank you for your consideration.
You're asking to buy one more of these because you already got one?
Yeah, this is the unit that's in my truck and then the second one goes in our medical unit. So we run with two cardiac monitors. And since during the daytime, we don't have as many responders, I typically run an ALS package. And then if I'm gone or a second vehicle shows up, the fire station runs an ALS package. So cardiac monitor first out of all this. So we're buying a monitor for fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars instead of thirty thousand.
I'd like to make a motion to approve option one.
A second.
Steve, Melissa, discussion. Our department's done a fantastic job, I think, increasing the ability to save lives on both regarding. Should we get grants? Seeing no further discussion, council, please vote. That's approved. Takes us G approved retail cigarette tobacco permit for Dollar General store thirty four fifteen, F one fifteen, Lincoln Highway. Back to August eleventh, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty five. Second. Jason, Stephen, I think on there, that is supposed to be probably west, so one to the west highway. Discussions. Seeing none, that's what please vote. That's approved. Takes us to H, five day special class C retail alcohol license out line LLC TVA Lucky. White wine slushy sixth street for downtown farmer's market. A is approved five day license for eight two to eight six, twenty twenty four. Move to approve.
Second.
And Melissa, discussion. Seeing none, that's what please vote. It's approved. Takes us to B, approved five day license for E sixteen, E twenty twenty four.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Sandy, Jason.
Let me see what I have.
Okay, council, please vote. And that's approved. Takes us into reports starting with city administrator.
So almost there when I was putting in notes for my next report that I failed to update the dates on my chart or what that is, and so I apologize for your oversight on that. But I've been updating twenty forty from our July eighth work session. Had a good talk with Main Street America. I was there here last week. And we had our NEDC meeting, Brenda, Dan, I, and that was agenda to talk about future discussions on whether or not we're continuing to plan on being here and expand, which they are. At our summer conference on the tenth through the twelfth, started working on developing a cap for capstone. And then I've also been working on the affirmation work with the rail run. And then hoping that the six items we're waiting on will be in by hopefully the end of this week, so we start working on the council chambers and get all the systems running. No, we don't continue to have issues like we have several times in the last year.
Hey, for my report, Jordan mentioned Main Street, but I think they said it was our third visit from Main Street America this year, which is pretty extraordinary. And then the other exciting thing is then this fall, I believe it's going to be, they're going to be the host for Main Streets from across Iowa to learn how to use the new Main Street tools and come up with a plan. So they're going to have across the US, they have, so they're coming in here to use Nevada as kind of the example. Case study. It's study for putting together the new You know, study for putting together the new. Evaluation tool. So it'll be neat because we'll get, I think, some pretty good feedback from a lot of experienced folks who are coming in here for that. Um the the leads legislative policy committee continues to meet. They're planning to be pretty proactive. Next session in a way that I haven't really seen the last few years. So I think. That'll be helpful just to make sure that they're they're planning ahead for making sure as the legislature moves along that they're thinking through. All the detailed ways that those proposals affect cities so that they're not having to be quickly reactive. So they're trying to be more proactive, which I think will be helpful. And then Surrey County Emergency Management, we just met um in October. We'll be meeting again for the quarterly meeting. And we'll be getting a presentation about the changes of Ames Resource Recovery Plant and how that might affect the other communities in the county. So. Stay tuned on that because I know there's issues with the Boone landfill not taking waste at the same time that the Ames. Um Resource Recovery Plant incinerator is at its end of life. So Ames is trying to figure out. How to handle waste long term. Any questions for me? And council reports. And go back to staff.
So wastewater, our normal operations maintenance, everything we normally do. Uh we did repairs to bar screen, break discs failed and we had work parts put in. That's been completed and done. Uh number two intermediate pump, the intermediate pump station was rebuilt and reinstalled and replaced the electric solenoid valve. On one of our sledge pumps, the pump sledge above primaries. And on Friday, we're going to be going down to Indianola. To tour their facility, which is very much like our new facility, so we can get kind of our hands on. We're going to spend a good portion of the day down there. With their system, try to learn if you have to take the project. That's it. Any questions? Ready here.
How am I? Owen.
Nothing.
Alice?
Uh I just want to vote along with you at the end of this meeting.
My name's Matt Ferraz, he's very good again. Kim, you're named by all side. I have to order some new shirts for Henry and Melissa. Um can we wait till we get those shirts ordered?
Wait till the next meeting.
I don't know if we'll be done about then, but um potentially the following, it will take. Four days to go on that. Up the days to. Yeah, I might be done there.
Well, okay, whatever it's done, we'll get it next time or the time of the day.
Okay.
Danny, I wore my shirt today.
And you made everybody jealous.
Mine is two sizes too small, so I'm also getting a shirt for it. Shut your mouth. I don't have anything.
Just working on transfers and let those on some agendas coming up and working with Bela, trying to get our account switched over. Um working on the grants and my for the price and the cat grants, getting all those requirements. A lot of them. Tied up and updating policies, so.
You want to have anything to report? Uh Aaron, Aaron and. Brandon?
Nothing, nothing for me.
Um I've got a couple of things. I'm working on our um annual reports for the state. Including our open access report, which is how many people from cities other than Nevada have checked out items. Um our interlibrary loan report and our direct state A report, which is. Um. How we spent the direct that are earned, the direct state money. That we get um each year from the state. And then our summer reading program is in its final week this week. Um. Lots of still exciting things still happening today or this week. We had a trashin show with our teenagers who got really creative with a lot of. Um. Literal trash and items that otherwise would have gone in the recycle bin. Uh this week we've got the Blank Park Zoo coming and on Friday night we have an ice cream social and an outdoor movie. So we're excited for those things. And then last week's board meeting had to get postponed because we didn't have a forum, so we'll be having our board meeting tomorrow night. And that's it.
Sign up for it. Anything else before we adjourn? The adjourn.
Sorry.
Name. That's where we go for all this, I guess. All right.